Ms. Lay. Ms. Martin.
Here.
Mr. Nutter.
Here.
Mayor Samaras. Mr. Dakota.
Here.
Ms. Dougherty.
Here.
Mr. Hoi.
Here.
Six shades, one absent.
Looking for approval of the minutes of the regularly scheduled Lowell School Committee meeting of Wednesday, January 17th, to have a motion to accept and place on order by Mr. Nutter, seconded by Ms. Martin. And now, permission to enter? Any comments or questions regarding the permission to enter? Mr. Nutter.
Gary. The items that refer to the MASC, which would be to take our policy manual and clean it up and get it digitized, and then the funding for the audit for the student activities. All this says is funding provided by contracted services. I know we have at least six, that I counted, contracted services accounts. So what exactly are these accounts? Which of these accounts are going to be charged for these services?
It's the contracted services in the Function 1400. When I do my budget report...
Which is, I'm sorry, is 1400 in the superintendent's office?
No, that's administrative.
Okay.
Yeah, finance and administration.
Motion to approve? Mr. Nutter, seconded by Mr. Dakota, roll call.
Ms. Lay. Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Nutter.
Yes.
Mayor Samaras. Mr. Dakota.
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty.
Yes.
Mr. Hoi.
Yes.
Six shades, one absent, approved.
We now have the ratification of memorandum of agreement with the SEIU Library AIDS, motion to approve by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Dakota, roll call.
Ms. Lay.
Yes.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Nutter.
Yes.
Mayor Samaras. Mr. Dakota.
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty.
Yes.
Mr. Hoi.
Yes.
Six shades, one absent, approved.
Ratification of memorandum of agreement with the LSAA, motion to approve by Mr. Nutter, seconded by Mr. Hoi, roll call, please.
Ms. Lay.
Yes.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Nutter.
Yes.
Mayor Samaras. Mr. Dakota.
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty.
Yes.
Mr. Hoi.
Yes.
Six shades, one absent, approved.
I think if we can now rise for memorials. Betsy Moore, retired Robinson School music teacher. Memorial for Katie Duran, daughter of Michelle Duran, Lowell High School clerk. Please lower the lights for a moment of silence. Under unfinished business, we are going to, I need a motion to defer the subcommittee assignments until the mayor returns. Motion by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Lay. All those in favor, say aye, thank you. And then we have a motion by Mr. Nutter. Do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
Oh, do I read it? And then I'll read it. Okay, so, I'm sorry. Request the superintendent to update the committee on the status of new maintenance of effort agreement with the city and set March 1st to finalize and present to the committee for approval at the March 7th meeting or per Chapter 603 CMR 10. We contact the Education Commissioner's office and request designee to conduct a hearing. Seconded by Ms. Martin.
Mr. Nutter?
Thank you. Now, you know, I put this motion in a week ago before we found out we needed a new city manager. This manager has been very supportive, in my view, of public education here in the city, helping us to meet and exceed net school spending, which had not been the case prior to him being here. And I think it's more important than ever to get this squared away. I think people have a little bit of a misconception, and I just wanted to check with you, Mr. Frisch. My understanding is that when we finalize this agreement, and if we're able to, you know, knock it down by, let's say, $1 or $2 million, the city is in no obligation to send that to the school department, correct? I mean, all that does basically is knock down our, we met net school spending by $6 million as opposed to $8 million, correct?
That's correct. Once the city provides their share of the net school spending, as long as they meet the net school spending, they don't have to, if we reduce the memorandum of agreement, the expenditures that are allocated to the school district, if we reduce this, as long as they're exceeding the net school spending, then there would be no money coming back to us.
Are they willing to, I know you and I have had discussions on our indirect costs that we use for the food service account, and you have very good records to back that up. You and I have discussed that extensively. Does the city provide us with documentation that supports their chargebacks also?
Yes, we've been meeting with them. I met with Connor Baldwin and the interim deputy CFO, and they've been very forthcoming in sharing how they came up with the allocations back to the school department. We have gone back and forth, and we're getting much closer to coming up with an agreement. So I, I think we'll be very close to your timeline.
As, as long as we're able to do it before, you know, the beginning of April and before budget season, I'd be very happy. Thank you.
You bet.
Excuse me?
Mr. Hoi, I'm sorry.
Thank you. I like the motion a lot, Mr. Nutter, but I just feel like, I know we'll be, I'm pretty sure we'll be ready, but where they're changing over city managers, I'm not sure if they're going to be in a rush to be ready for this date. So I just think we should show some leniency toward the city because of the situation that they're in right now. So that's all I have, Jerry, is about the date. That's all that, I'm, I'm not sure if we're going to be ready for that. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Are we looking at a friendly amendment to change the date, push it back a week to the, the middle of March, or?
That date's not set in stone, and...
Okay, so that's clear.
Mr. Frisch just said it was working and positive and looking forward, so I'll accept that as a report of progress.
All right. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
The next motion by Mr. Nutter. Request the superintendent to update, explain the delay in purchasing equipment for many other schools, similar to what was done for the Pine Art School using our Comcast revolving account. A second? Do I have a second on this motion?
Second.
Ms. Lay. Mr. Nutter.
Thank you. I was at the Robinson, and I was also speaking with the principal at another school, and I talked to the superintendent, and I know that we purchased some equipment using funds from the Comcast account, and I, was my understanding, we had open recs for more equipment. Do you know where that stands and what the delay is with? I mean, we do have a revolving account, you know, that Comcast funds, basically, for the schools.
Right. The state has changed their method of how we can expend from that revolving account. In essence, it is going to be, per their state rules, it's going to be expended from their regular general fund, and we have to have the city council approve the plan of expenses before we can expend monies. So we're going to be putting forth a three-year plan before the school committee, and then once the school committee weighs in, then we'll, or approves it, then we'll submit it to the city council for application for payment and purchasing.
So it's no longer going to be under the school department's control any longer?
Yeah, it's a new method that has changed from the state.
Ms. Martin?
Can I just, so the state is interceding on the Comcast account?
Right. Well, the rules hit, the accounting, purchasing has changed. Before it was, we were able to buy it from the, or purchase it from the revolving account. That has now changed, that we need to have the city council approve the request, and then it's, we are, we're allowed to then purchase from the, once it's approved.
So is that true of all of our revolving accounts, or the Comcast account?
Just the Comcast. Just the change in the Comcast expenditures.
Okay, thank you.
All those in favor of the motion?
Madam Vice Chair.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Dougherty.
That's okay, no problem. I just have a few questions through you to the superintendent, it's probably for Gary, but that account, the Comcast account, is that roughly last year, what was that, about $800,000? If you know, I'm not sure either, so that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, I don't believe that there was that much in the revolving account for, under our control. So we are going to present a three-year plan. Three-year plan will be in the neighborhood of about $800,000.
All right, thank you.
Any other comments or questions about this motion? All those in favor, say aye. Motion passes. Next motion by Mr. Nutter. Per the open meeting law, any combined subcommittee meeting which results in more than three members in attendance must be posted as a meeting of the committee of the whole. Second?
Second.
Mr. Hoi, Mr. Nutter.
Ms. Lay and I attended the Massachusetts Association of School Committees' training for new members, and one of the things that was brought to our attention by the gentleman who ran it was that when you have a combined subcommittee meeting, in many cases, you have a quorum of members in attendance.
That's true.
Therefore, if you decided on something, you basically decided on something that wasn't presented to the whole school committee. So they advised us that anytime you have a meeting, that a combined meeting, and he said, "Go ahead and have them, but just to protect yourselves so you don't get any more, you know, open meeting law violations," and I know we've, you know, in the past year we've faced a couple of those, rather just post them as a meeting of the whole and, and save. It was interesting, because I also found out that, you know, if we, other members are always encouraged to attend, but if we invite the other members to come sit here in these chairs, it's considered that they're part of the meeting. They are required, actually, to sit with the public behind the railing, and they can ask questions just like any public member can. But if they sit in here, they are part of the meeting. So it's just something that, you know, because of the atmosphere and, and the, you know, the differences that still exist on other issues, I think we just have to make sure that we just follow, you know, protect ourselves at, at all costs, that's all.
Ms. Martin?
Thank you. And having not attended this training in many, many, many years, my understanding was that because in our subcommittees, we never take final votes on anything, nothing is ever decided in subcommittee, it always has to be brought to the full body before any action can be taken, that there wouldn't be any, I mean, posting it obviously isn't a problem, but I'm not sure if this, if this is a recommendation or a change, or...
Well, the, the question was, you know, someone said, so if the committee decides to bring, you know, the subcommittee decides to bring forward a motion, since you already had a majority of people in attendance, even though it's only the subcommittee that's bringing it forward, because you had enough members in attendance, it became a majority, and it would still be considered in violation of the open meeting law. And I, I don't know if that changed, or if they just got some clarification, because they've been through other complaints with it.
So a recommendation from a subcommittee would be considered a fully executed motion?
If there was a...
Even if it was brought, even if it was, had to be brought before the full school committee for a vote?
If there was, if there was a majority of members in attendance. So if we had a subcommittee meeting, financial subcommittee meeting, and you and Jackie also attended, and, you know, we brought, we talked about something and, and, you know, you kind of supported it, and then we brought it forward, since you had already been in attendance at the meeting and stated that, you know, you thought it was a good idea, when we voted to bring it forward, you essentially had already voted for it. And yes, it's a, it's a fine line, and, and it's, yeah, exactly.
Any other concerns or comments? Mr. Dakota.
But, but typically, if others are in attendance, because I've attended a couple of meetings, subcommittees, I didn't vote. I'm just in attendance, so it's, it's not a question...
You don't, you don't have to vote if you, if you even are asked questions from sitting in here, rather than sitting with the public. He was, he, I know he was being an overabundance of cautiousness, but because we have seen, I mean, again, this committee has faced, I know, last year, a couple of open meeting law challenges. So rather than, why face it when you can easily avoid it? That's all I'm saying.
Mr. Hoi.
Madam Chair, through you to the acting superintendent, how are you tonight? After listening to Ms. Martin there, I'm a little confused on this, so I, I would think if, and I'm not putting this on you right now, if the superintendent was here, maybe he has something from our lawyer that's telling us, you know, because I like the motion, I'm just confused about it. So I think we should maybe get a answer from our lawyer on this, and just to make sure we're all set, that's all.
We can certainly do that.
I have no...
Okay.
So are we adding anything to the motion? No, we're just going to get, we're going to get feedback from our attorney. All right, all those in favor? Aye. Motion passes.
Our next motion is by Jackie Dougherty. Request the superintendent provide the committee with additional options to address site issues for the day school and the middle school bubble that do not require students from the Cardinal O'Connell being returned to their sending schools. The options to be presented and discussed at a meeting of the whole prior to the regularly scheduled March 7th school committee meeting. Motion by Ms. Dougherty, seconded by Mr. Hoi.
Second.
Ms. Dougherty.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. So I think that we've had, even in the past two years, a number of motions about the middle school bubble. You know, we've known this is a problem, you know, this was coming up, and we needed to face it. We've also had a number of motions and discussions about the STEM Academy. Recently, we had these options, there were three options, about what we're going to do that would impact a site for the day school, deal with the middle school bubble, you know, all these issues. I'm concerned because time is going by quickly. As my colleagues may recall, it was last June, we voted to send the day school to Methuen, and it was right, like, the end of the year. And so I'm just trying to get a jump on this. I know that when those three options were presented to us, I had concerns about all of them, frankly, and I know we were told there's going to be more information coming, and I know you guys are working hard to get more information and come up with a solution for this very complicated issue that deals with a number of moving parts. I'm just hoping to move that process forward, and kind of like with my colleague, Mr. Nutter, about the maintenance of effort agreement, which I know it's been 10 years since we've made changes to that. I don't want to be in, sitting in June, trying to make a plan. This is too important, too many children involved, so I'm, I know that maybe those three options have changed since they were last presented to us, and it's, you know, you're still looking at that, but I'd like to try to get something on the calendar that you're going to come forward with some options that are really viable solutions that I think are going to work for all, or most of our students and families. And that, that's my intention with this motion, I see that...
Deputy Superintendent Dergen.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. We are currently working on a number of viable, potentially viable options that we'd like to be able to present. At the, the two meetings prior, it was deferred to subcommittee, so that was our intent to bring something forward at subcommittee, including some of those proposals that we brought forward before with potential modifications and other options that, since that time, we've been able to pursue.
And you'll see that I say in the motion, a meeting of the whole. So I know, we talked about subcommittee, we don't have to wait for a regularly scheduled meeting, but we do have to poll the members and find something that would work, because it is such an important issue, and it has, touches so many parts.
Mr. Frisch.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Congratulations, Ms. Martin.
Mr. Samaras won't like that, so...
Okay. Didn't know what to call you. But, Ms. Martin. That's a safer bet. Just to add a little information, we, we are planning on issuing a request for proposal for leasing educational space of, similar to what we did with the Methuen property, Methuen lease. So that information is, is going to be going out and being advertised, and we hope to solicit proposals, and then obviously we'll share those proposals with the school committee, and then obviously we'll look at the data, look at what is our best options, but putting all the additional work to come up with additional options that we think may be more favorable.
Any other, yes, Mr. Hoi.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. This motion here, to me, I'm just curious, through you to the acting superintendent tonight. I think this motion tells me one thing, I mean, I think you're looking for different opinions and options from all of us, correct? Input from us on this? Like, for instance, sending the kids back to their schools, the guys that, the kid, the children that are at the Cardinal O'Connell School. I'm thinking about, like me, I think we should send them back to their schools, so I do have that opinion. I'd like to have a, a meeting, again, before everything, so maybe we can give you some input on how we all feel, on what we think you should do. I don't think we've maybe done enough, enough of that yet. So I mean, the motion's a good motion, but I just think that we need to give you some input on which way to go before we make any votes. That's all.
If I could, from the, from the chair, Mr. Hoi, I believe that this March 7th meeting would be our opportunity to offer our opinions at that, in that venue. That would be my understanding.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions or concerns? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Our next motion, also by Ms. Dougherty. Request the superintendent direct each school to develop a list of top 10 most pressing facility needs to share with the facility's subcommittee as a way to get an immediate handle on issues of primary concern in our buildings. Seconded by Mr. Hoi. Ms. Dougherty.
Thank you. I think the motion pretty much speaks for itself, but I just wanted to put some context in it. As we know, we have pages and pages of work orders, outstanding work orders of work that needs to be done in our school facilities. This idea actually came to me at visiting one of our schools. Some of our schools, they're minor things that, you know, like bubblers that don't work, that are impacting the schools...
Don't touch me.
Oh, sorry.
Don't touch me, I'm sorry too. I didn't mean to do that, but I just love his all, I do love his all. But she did, she touched my elbow, oh, boy, is that hurt.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
It's the Italian in me, I apologize. I do lose my train of thought, thank you for that, Mr. Hoi. So it, so... So my thinking is every, each school comes up with their top 10, and this one school I'm thinking of where it was brought to my attention, if we had working bubblers on every floor, we wouldn't have, you know, 7th graders and 8th graders on the 5th grade floor. You know, it, it helps with the discipline and controlling the children and the, the whole environment at the school. Or a broken window, or a handicap ramp that needs to be fixed. I mean, these are things that, you know, they might get buried down to the bottom of that pile of work orders, but quick fix is going to make a difference for that school right away. So that's my intention, to have every school come up with their top 10 most pressing facility needs, and then to present them to the facility's subcommittee, that we actually have a meeting, and try to put some light of day on those issues, and see if we can move the ball on some of these facility concerns. That's my intention with this motion. I think that we might be able to, you know, make some real improvements without a huge investment of time and money. And I appreciate your support.
Mr. Hoi.
Thanks again, Ms. Martin. I'm really not in support of this motion, and the only reason why is I believe, and you know I've been just as much involved in maintenance of our schools than anybody here, and we all have done a great job with it. I think we opened the can of worms that needed to be opened, the school committee has done it. But I, I actually have to say, that report that Mr. Underwood did for us a while back, I think was a great report. I think if we go to anybody to find out what our most pressing needs are, is we should just go to Mr. Underwood. He has done above and beyond what he's supposed to be doing for us. He's worked in that high school harder than any one of us have worked in the past year, that's my opinion. So I, I think we don't have to go to the schools for this. I think all we would have to do is go to Mr. Underwood, and he could probably tell us every top 10 issue in every school in the city. And I just wanted to say that. That's all. Thank you.
Any other comments? Mr. Nutter, then Mr. Lay.
I would be interested in, in hearing from the schools directly, and also seeing how that, you know, in, in 2013, I know Ms. Martin remembers, the school committee undertook a huge investment in putting together a comprehensive facilities assessment study that still is, resides on our website, and I'd be interested to see how the top 10 in the schools now compare with, you know, some of the needs back then, and I have the feeling we're going to see a lot of them being in the... of them being the exact same issues that we were talking about in 2013. So I, I think it's a good motion, and I'll support that.
Mr. Lay.
Same here, I think I, I like this motion, and I, I think we probably need more space anyway for the school, and if we could, if we could get with some of the stuff that we don't need, that would be good, so. Even though Mr. Underwood is working on it, and I, I think it's good for us, the school committee, to, to know also.
Yes, Sophia, I'm sorry, Ms. Marsden.
I think this is a really great motion, it's a great way to really communicate with schools, and I think you would find a lot of little things turn up, I mean, especially students talk about, like, these little things that you wouldn't really think are bugging them, but it's a really big impact on their student body that aren't only bugging faculty, but the students as well, so, thank you.
Yes, Mr. Howie.
Thank you. Just in case you didn't understand me, I have no problem, but going back to the schools to ask them their top 10 most pressing facility needs, some principals that I know, and I know a lot of them can't even put in a light bulb, they don't know anything about roofing, they don't know anything about boilers, they don't know a lot of things when it comes to maintenance. I think the sharpest person in this city right now, when it comes to maintenance and what we need in our buildings, comes from Mr. Underwood. I think he was a great hire, and I'm going to stand by that tonight. Nothing against your motion, I think it is good, but I think Mr. Underwood should be the main man on this. That's all, thank you very much.
Thank you. There are no other comments, I'd recommend a roll call vote on the motion as it stands. Mr. Lay. Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Nutter?
Yes.
Mayor Sumeris? Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Howie?
No.
Five yays, one nay, one absent, approved. Thank you. Next motion by Ms. Doherty. Request the superintendent direct staff to remove surplus materials cluttering halls and storage areas at the Robinson School, either by donating or finding some other acceptable means of disposal. In addition, provide the committee with a report on surplus materials cluttering other schools with a planned timeline for removal at those locations. Seconded by Mr. Dakota. Thank you. Ms. Doherty.
Thank you. This one is very specific to the Robinson School, I heard it from the principal as well as memory of the staff there, that apparently there was, when we used to have wood shop, there's a lot of wood shop tools that UTEC in particular would be interested in, and if there are things that UTEC doesn't want to just find some way to donate them or get rid of them, because there's this sense of these materials cluttering up the environment, it says something about, you know, can you have pride in your school if you've got all these surplus materials cluttering up, taking up needed storage space? So that's why I specifically brought out the Robinson, because they came to me with this. But I'm, I added the part about other schools, because I think, and, and Mr. Frisch might know this, there may be other materials around other schools that we want to be looking at, just cleaning up, that, but my intention was to start with the Robinson, because I, as I said, many, several people have told me it's, it's a problem for them. Thank you.
Deputy Durkin, and then Mr. Howie.
Thank you. We do have a process in place for that, and I was going to ask if, with your permission to ask Assistant Superintendent Desmond to explain that process for removing surplus materials in schools.
Thank you, Deputy Durkin. So last year, at the beginning of the school year, 2016, many of the school building leaders had questions about what do we do with surplus materials? And so I did go back to the policy. We were able to, with Ms. Durkin, Deputy Durkin's help, find a policy, and the policy is that schools have to inventory what is surplus. We bring it before this body, this committee, for approval to then go to Mr. Vaughn's office here at City Hall, and then they go out to bid for either someone who might want to purchase those items, or, or some kind of a donation system. And then from there, if there is nobody who's willing to do that, the schools are able to dispose of those materials, either recycle them depending on what they are, or offer them to children. So last year, we did that process twice. All schools were sent, I sent it to them via email, an inventory sheet. They provided an inventory of the items that they wanted removed, or that they felt were surplus, brought that before the body, it was voted on, it went to Mr. Vaughn's office at City Hall, that process was followed. And most of the items were either recycled or offered to students, because there was no, no one interested in, in purchasing them. And so then we did it again, and I sent out an email to all of our building leaders doing, with the inventory list again in April, and they had another go-around where they could provide us with lists of items they wanted surplused out. So at this point, we will do that again, and so we will continue that process. At the beginning of the year, I, I did survey principals, and at that time, they didn't feel like they needed to go through that process. And so I did not send out an email with the inventory, the blank inventory sheet in November of this year, but I had given, I had said that we would do it in the spring.
If I could, very much for that update. It sounds like because we have a new leader at the Robinson, and we didn't do it in the fall, that might be why they weren't, but I think those wood shop, that wood shop program was what, eight years ago? It's, it really was a while ago. But, so I, it's good to know that there is a process in place, and you'll be doing that. Thank you.
Other comments?
Yes.
Mr. Howie.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. 20 years ago, I, I remember, I put some type of motion into almost something like this. I'm not going to support this motion either, and most of the time, I do support your motions, but I think we already have a plan in place, like Ms. Desmond just said, I think she, she's supposed to, if I think, if I remember the policy correct, you're supposed to do that twice a year, correct? And I think the only person that can get rid of any extra materials is the city manager, if I'm not mistaken. And I know, when I see the school Robinson School, they, they don't need their name in a motion like this, and that's one of the reasons why I'm not supporting it. And I remember once, once a long time ago, I think just before Ms. Martin come here, so we know it's a long time ago, and one school would have all kinds of wax, and another school would have stripper, but no soap. And the other school would have soap and no stripper, and this school, and, so there is a problem. I, I know most of this motion is beautiful, other than the Robinson School being looked at, it's, I visited that school yesterday, and they need so much help over to that school, it's unbelievable, so when I see their name in a motion, I'm not going to support it tonight. But with that said, even Mr. Neary has a closet full of stuff. I don't know if we're just late going to it, but I know you're supposed to do this twice a year, correct?
There was not a policy on when it was done, so it had not been done for a very long time, and so because I was asked by some principals about some curriculum material that were in closets, I went to Deputy Durkin, we went through policies, and we found the policy that stated that we had to collect the inventories, we had to bring them before this committee for approval to move them forward to Mr. Vaughn's office at City Hall for, as you said, the final approval from City Hall.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Doherty.
Thank you. Given that update, that information that we have a process in place, I'm withdrawing the motion anyway. It doesn't seem like we need it. As long as we know that we're going to be moving forward, that, that satisfies my concern in this area. Thank you.
Like it never happened. If you'd like to return to the chair.
Thank you. We have a motion by Mr. Dakota. Request that the superintendent establish a link on the Lowell Public Schools website that indicates all K-12 events in the Lowell Public Schools. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Howie. Mr. Dakota.
Thank you, Ms. Doherty. I believe that, that most of the school websites have the events that they're doing, but I would like to have one location to find it, as opposed to going to each individual school to see what's going on in the schools, whether it be a basketball game, whether it be a little art show going on, or something along that idea. I think if we had a central location on the school website to, to help us with that, I think it'd be much, much better all around for everybody.
Mr. Howie.
Thank you. Andy, I love, I love this motion. The only concerns I have through you, Madam Chairperson to the acting superintendent tonight, Ms. Durkin. The only concern I would have, because like yesterday, I missed the science fair down at the high school, and John Leahy and another counselor, Karen Cirillo, last night gave us some big compliments on how great it was, so I, I want to say thank you to them. But I didn't make that yesterday, because I didn't see it. So I think his motion really is a great one. But what my concern is, when you put all those schools together and put them on our calendar, that thing's going to look kind of funny to look at. So I'm wondering, what do you think? What's your opinion? How do you feel about that?
So I think that what we'll have to do is work with our IT department and determine how best to get the information out. It may be that it's not a monthly calendar, but it's a daily calendar, so that you just see a listing of the schools. So we'll definitely, I think it is an excellent motion as well, but we'll definitely work with IT to try to filter that in. It is along the lines of some of the work that we're trying to do at the district level through our Family Resource Center, to have a clearinghouse for families, so this aligns with that work, and we'll get on that.
Thank you, Ms. Doherty. I'm thinking just as, just off the top, what you just brought up, maybe a weekly as opposed to a daily, maybe a weekly, not monthly. Monthly could be cumbersome, but I think a weekly one would be, would be, it wouldn't be that monstrous of a job, I think. Thank you.
Any other comments? Mr. Lay.
Yes. I think if we, we got sent by software, and by, by, in e-file, electronic file, we probably could, could see it and expand it if we need to, so I think, I think monthly or weekly may be okay.
All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. We have a number of reports of the superintendent. The monthly enrollment figures report, are there any comments or questions about that? The monthly, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Martin.
I just had a quick question, if I could, on the, the change document, the enrollment changes. Are we noticing any particular trends that we should be aware of?
So the, the only trends that we continue to see are students that are coming to us from Puerto Rico, our numbers are up. I think as of last week, we're over 100 for sure, students, and so that's, we're just tracking that data, but nothing else that is strikingly, you know, different.
Thank you very much.
Any comments or questions regarding the monthly financial report? Mr. Nutter.
Thank you. Usually, Mr. Frisch gives us a, a letter with that, but I didn't...
There was a letter.
I didn't see, I didn't see that. But just a quick question, a couple of questions. On the, one question is on the carry forward from last year. Where did we get the $800,000? Because I went back and looked at some wrap-ups from the end of last year, and it didn't appear that this, we were bringing forward any money. Is that unused purchase orders or something that we...
Yes, that's purchase orders that weren't able to be completed in FY '17, so they were carried forward to FY '18. So it's just a purchase order that, that the goods didn't, weren't received.
Okay. Thank, I thought that's, might be the case, but I just wanted a little clarification. The other question I have is on the suspense account. Again, looking at the budget that's online, and looking at the reports that I've looked through, I was under the impression that we had over $1 million in our, in our suspense account. The, the budget vote was for $1,377, uh, $1,377. And yet, the report says we have $130,000. So I was just wondering, what happened to the other $800,000?
I'm happy to answer that question. If you look on page five of the budget report, and line item, or row 124, you'll see that the budget was $130,855. Recently, $250,000 was added to our budget from the city.
Right.
So that amounts to 380, $380,000. The balance of that is, we identified in September, October, some reductions in line items, in those, instead of moving those dollars to the suspense account, and then moving the suspense account to offset the salaries, we're just waiting to offset the salaries. And so, to make a long story short, we have identified about $600,000 that will credit the teacher salary account and other salary accounts that, that was the reason why we needed the $1 million, was for the increases that were just approved.
Right, but again, I'm just looking at clarification. My understanding was that once that budget was approved in June for the $1 million...
Oh, okay, yeah.
It was up to the school committee then, to make the necessary transfers. I didn't think that the administration could transfer $800,000 without approval from the school committee.
Yeah, let me just...
And I know it may just be a technicality, but...
Yeah, let me just walk you through what happened. So our budget was about $800,000 short...
Right.
...from the funding.
I remember well.
Yeah. And we were, we asked the city council for $800,000. Subsequently, the state, the senate came up with $600,000, and the city provided, said they're, they're good for $250,000. The senate never materialized, so that we're basically short the $600,000. $600,000, in order to balance the budget, we just took the $600,000 from the $1 million that was, because we had to come up with a, we had to take it from somewhere.
But there was a meeting in August that I was at...
Right.
Where $610,000 was voted to be cut.
Right.
To make up for the shortfall, because the manager had committed to $250.
Right.
So again, my understanding is, once that budget was approved by the school committee at the million dollar mark, that that money isn't able to be transferred out without authorization. If, if I'm wrong, explain, explain that to me, but my understanding is, once that budget is approved, and it was, and in fact, it was, you know, we had the, the meeting for the $610,000, and that was going to be my next question. I mean, I, I saw that we had cut $98,000 in, in office supplies, and I don't see that adjustment anywhere. I, I'm just trying to follow, to get an understanding of the budget, and to follow the budget in these reports that you give us on a monthly basis...
Right.
...so that we can match things up. And, and it's just very confusing when you expect to see a million dollars there, and all of a sudden, there's 130. And I went through, I, I spent my weekend, and I know my, my wife says I should get a life, but I spent my weekend going through every motion from July through the inauguration of this committee. And nowhere in there is there a transfer request or anything for the school committee to approve moving that money out of... moving that money out of the suspense account. So how did the money get moved without school committee authorization? And why isn't the adjustments that we made or the school committee made for the reduction in funds for, you know, all those line items, especially the reduction in office supplies? I was shocked when I looked at one office supply line and saw an additional $484,000. Where did that come from? Again, someone who's just trying to follow the money, it's very confusing.
Okay, in regards to the $610,000, I certainly can bring before the committee this, a journal, a budget transfer, moving money from one account to another to the suspense account. We'll just need to do another transfer from the suspense account to the salaries. So I definitely, we definitely could do that.
Why, but again, following the law, isn't it, once that budget is approved, isn't it school committee, isn't it the policy at least of the school committee, that, you know, up to a certain amount, you can transfer within the same thing, but anything after that needs school committee approval?
Right, but we didn't, the budget was short.
But the shortness has, again, the shortness has nothing to do with the line item that was approved by the school committee for a million dollars. And if that, if changes have to, transfers have to be made, I thought that's why they were made in August, so that we could bring the budget in line.
Ms. Martin?
Just as a point of clarification, and I don't have the memory for this meeting in August that you clearly do watching, watching at home.
I was there.
There you go. But could this be a situation where in August, we made those, we made those reductions and just taking the action at the meeting is enough to justify making the change without having to do a discreet budget transfer documentation of it, that it would just be the vote of the committee that would then be enough to basically enforce the committee's will without having to have an additional report? I just don't, I don't know if that's.
Yeah. May I make a motion?
Yes.
I had contacted Andy Dakota earlier today about a finance subcommittee meeting, and I don't know if Mr. Lay is available next Wednesday for a finance subcommittee meeting. But I would like to send this report to the finance subcommittee and, you know, for 5:00 next Wednesday and go in maybe to more explanation rather than tie up this meeting. But, you know, if you can go through the process of how a budget is approved with a million dollars and without a vote of the school committee, it goes down to $130,000, it just does not seem that that's the way it's supposed to be handled. At least, I mean, I know they can't do it on the council side, so I don't think we can do it on the school side.
So we have a motion to refer this report to the finance subcommittee by Mr. Nutter, seconded by Ms. Martin. All those in favor, say aye. Motion passes. Any comments or concerns regarding the personnel report? Hearing none, I would look for a motion to accept reports 8.1, 8.2, and 8.3 as reports of progress. Motion by Mr. Howie, seconded by Mr. Lay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We have a report, the Lowell High Head of School update. We will be deferring that report. Oh, Ms., Deputy Superintendent Durkin, did you want to speak on that?
Thank you. Just prior to the school committee meeting, I did speak with the superintendent, and he would like to defer this till the next meeting when he can be here.
Thank you. So we will be deferring that till the next meeting. Next report is on the state aid update. I'm wondering if we can hear from Mr. Frisch to just kind of verbalize what the state aid update is for the committee and our viewers?
I'd be happy to, Madam Chairperson. Wanted to bring the school committee up to date in regards to the budget information that we received from the state. As you know, Chapter 78 is the funding program for public schools and the Commonwealth. Chapter 70 is really three easy steps to come up with the foundation budget. Chapter 70 develops a foundation budget for each school district in the Commonwealth. Then they determine the local portion of the budget, and then the remainder is from state aid. State aid represents about 75%, and local aid is 20, 25%. Now, the foundation budget is, just like when you think of a foundation, you think of the floor. And so that's the minimum required net school spending. Urban centers such as Lowell Public Schools have a higher foundation budget per pupil than other communities because of the higher levels of economically disadvantaged students and additional L students as well. In comparison to other urban centers, Lowell resembles the average. There are a few neighboring towns that have higher foundation budgets per pupil, such as Lawrence. The city contribution, the 24, 25% that I talked about comes in two forms, cash and in-kind services. The in-kind services comes from the Maintenance of Effort Agreement. So primarily, our budget is built upon state aid, that's 75%, plus the cash contribution coming from the city. In comparison to last year, the enrollment is up 143 students. Foundation budget is up 6.7 million. This is not the complete picture. The city's contribution is going up 1.5 million, and the balance, 5.2 is from the state. The prior year cash contribution from the city was 18 million. So we would like the 1.5 million city contribution increase to come in the form of cash. So we would like to see the 18 million from last year be 19.5 million for this fiscal year.
Thank you. Any questions? Mr. Nutter?
Just to be clear, the 1.5 million right now is what the foundation, what the minimum increase that the city will be receiving or has to pay, but they don't necessarily have to be cash. You mentioned 18 million in cash. To be clear to people, my understanding is, they give us 18 million in cash, but actually roughly half of that, $9,000, is actually in transportation costs, which does not count to our net school spending, correct?
Correct.
So in actuality, we receive 9,000, $9 million in cash.
Yes.
Because the $9 million that we get for transportation is city-funded money that, you know, the city is required to pay. So we're hoping that the contribution does go up. The good news is with the state, these early numbers, these are the governor's numbers. The House is usually a little more generous, the Senate usually not. So hopefully, you know, that could be a little bit of an increase. But based on these numbers and based on the information that we requested of the superintendent earlier this year of what a level service budget would be. We seem to be looking at the fact that we will be able to at least offer a level service budget without any cuts, and that is good news for the city. Because if I remember, the superintendent said it was going to be around $6 million, our increase for us to do another level service budget. And this proposed money from the state and the city's contribution is just a little over that $6 million figure.
Yes, I would like to mention as well that the Title I funding has decreased by a million dollars. So the $6 million plus the million is roughly around $7 million. So the 6.7 would come very close to meeting our needs for the FY '19 budget. Also, as we go through our budget process, we're going to be looking for equity between our schools, and we're going to be looking at efficiency, savings. So it won't be, we're looking not only to have a level budget, but also to, more importantly, stretch every dollar that the city gives us as well as the state.
Thank you. The next report is the final budget calendar. Were there any comments on that one or questions? Okay. And I've been told we are going to defer the 2018, 2019 school calendar. So we'll go to the transportation update. Any questions or concerns about the transportation update?
We, excuse me, we have a few presenters in the audience. We have Jen McChrystal and Doty Dolan, who are going to give us an update about the fine work that they have done as well as our new Thunder Pride Star.
Thank you. Ms. McChrystal?
Thank you all for allowing us to present tonight. We actually had prepared a PowerPoint presentation with some pictures of the new buses. However, it's not working. So we'll get you the pictures.
Good.
I was going to say that if you get them to me, we can forward them out to the committee so they have the full PowerPoint.
And so we just wanted to provide you all with an update of what we've done in conjunction with Pride Star since we had voted to switch the contract to them, because a lot of work has been done. And the contract will, they will begin transporting our students the Monday after vacation. So since we began, we've met weekly with Pride Star. Doty and myself have met weekly with them to start to plan what are the technical things that need to be addressed to ensure our students have a smooth transition. So not only have we met weekly, but the Pride Star staff has come and spoken to our principals and our administration as a whole group, and also gone out to almost every school in the district, any school that was interested. They've gone out and met with their administrative teams and also had meetings with teachers and parents. They've also been to meetings with all of the schools' BCBAs so that we could plan for any contingencies around behavior or, and/or medical supports that the students may need on the buses. They've also been to several parent meetings, including the special ed PAC meetings a couple of times. And for example, the Bartlett School ran two parent meetings yesterday, I believe. And so they've been very active and involved in getting our feedback. And one of the things that we found very helpful from the special ed perspective, because they come from two different communities where they have the background with the behavior systems and autism, also the medical model, we've been able to work with them to add supports onto the bus routes that we know will be implemented. So for example, our students with behavior plans, Pride Star now has copies of all of their behavior plans that need to be implemented on the buses. And that's part of the training that they've done that Doty can speak to. The other thing they've helped us with is we've made social stories for our students. And when you see the PowerPoint, we put an example of one of the social stories in there, and they've been integral in getting us pictures of the buses so the kids know what to expect when the bus pulls up. The other thing that, from a special ed perspective, is huge, and I'm sure Doty will touch on this in terms of some of the technical aspects, is that they no longer will have to deal with car seats, which is huge when we're talking about all of our preschool students. Because historically, the parents would walk out of their house, put the car seat on the bus, put the kid in the car seat, go to school. We take the car seat out and then repeat it when they were going home, which is a lot of extra time. And honestly, there's also a lot of liability with everybody touching car seats. There's now something, a system that's built into the seats. And Pride Star has been very clear that it's the bus's responsibilities to make sure the students are buckled in and secure in the transportation so we won't have to deal with the car seats. So from our perspective, that's really exciting because we're talking over 1,000 students that are impacted by this in our city, and it's our in-district specialized transportation. So any student in district that has an IEP or a 504 that requires a smaller bus or a van or a wheelchair van is going to be accessing this service. So it's a lot of students, a lot of families, and a lot of vehicles and equipment that are required.
So in the past 90 days since the contract has been awarded to Pride Star, they've secured all their vehicles. All right, there's, I want to get the numbers right. There's 36 minibus buses and 30-plus vans at our disposal to use. All righty. The vans and the buses have all come with the cameras. The child check system has all been installed. They've hired the drivers. They've been quarried. They've secured a lot. They've registered the vehicles in Lowell. The Safe Stop, that app they were speaking of, you know, where we can track the vehicles, they purchased that. They brought it onboard on their own. So that will greatly, greatly, greatly assist us, especially in the afternoon where the buses are, where their children are. So I'm actually kind of excited about that.
And our plan to roll that out is in April. So we wanted to make sure, in conjunction with the folks from Pride Star, that our buses are running, that everybody knows what they're doing. We've got all of the data that the system can take in. And then we hope to meet with the school administration in March, make sure they know how to use it all, do parent meetings, and then in April, roll it out so that everybody has access on their phone so they can track the buses.
That's right. So they can be trained on it also. Again, with the training, the bus profiles, behavioral plans, that will go a long way into knowing who can sit where, who they should be on the bus with, who they should not be on the bus with. That will also help alleviate some of the problems that we were experiencing. So like Jen said, it's 1,000-plus children that they're transporting. What was your bus plan? And they're really nice buses. I'm actually hoping to see them in the next couple of days. I'm a little bit of a bus geek, so I actually can't wait to see them. But no, it's gone really well. And I have to say, I have to thank everyone at the school levels. They have gone out to the vehicles. They've told us who's coming on what vehicle, what bus they're going on. We've actually been able to clean up the database a little bit, which is really nice. So I have to say a big thank you to everyone at the school level. They've been so, so wonderful with this process. I have to say Pride Star has been excellent to deal with. I'm really excited about this change. I think it's really going to be a good thing. But just the time and attention they put into this quick, quick, quick transition, I think it's really going to pay off.
And I think from our perspective, they've been very open to our feedback around what hasn't historically worked and put in plans to address it. And the fact that they were, you know, willing to drive out to Methuen to meet with the BCBAs to go over again the things that we really felt like were strongly needed on buses, it just speaks to their commitment to make this work. And we really wanted you all to know the work that's been put in, not only at the school level, but on the Pride Star level, because we do expect there's going to be a few little bumps in the road as we get started, as people get acclimated. They've tried to keep as many buses and monitors on the routes as they possibly could so the kids don't have a big transition. But where there are changes, we are trying to communicate those, work with the kids, and prepare them for anything that's different. And because of the newest level of behavioral expectations, it's been great. Because when we say, really don't sit near the window because the glasses are going to go flying out of the window, they understand what that means, which is a big deal to a mom who's paying $300 every time the glasses go out the window. So trying to really make sure we're taking into account, right down to the individual kid level, has been tremendously amazing for us to have that level of conversation and confidence in what's happening. So we wanted to make sure we shared that with all of you.
I've actually reached out to a couple of the parents. As we're cleaning up the database, there's been a couple of questions, you know, when does your child come, you know, picked up in the morning, dropped off in the afternoon? The feedback I am getting from the parents is very positive. They're looking forward to this. They're looking forward to this transition. So, yeah, 2/26 is almost here.
Thank you. Mr. Dakota?
Thank you, Mr. Doherty. I'd like to thank Pride Star for bringing us into the 21st century kicking and screaming. Thank you.
Mr. Hoey?
Thank you. I know Pride Star was up against the wall when they were trying to hire people, so knowing they hired everybody with other people working against them, I give them a lot of credit. But what I'm excited about, Jen McChrystal always sounds excited when we talk about children, but I'm excited, I think, more than they are. I think the school committee should be so proud. This is a local company. Prior to them getting a contract off us, they opened up a school for autistic children, which we know is a real concern of all of ours. And to me, I'm just dying to see after they put the pedal to the metal and get the work done, how much they expand in the city alone, do other things for autistic children. So, I'm more excited than Jen McChrystal, and that's unbelievable. So, thank you, thank you very much, and thank you to Pride Star.
Thank you. Definitely above and beyond. So, we have, unless there's any other comments on this? We need to do a roll call.
No, just a motion.
Oh, where is it? Motion to defer the 2018, 2019 school calendar. Can I have a motion, Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Nutter?
Just a question. Why are we deferring that?
Perhaps Deputy Superintendent can explain that?
Sure. So, if you look at the calendar, there is an asterisk that is in specifically on the winter vacation, December 24th through Tuesday, January 1st. That should not be there, so we thought we could say to you, strike it, or we thought it'd be better just to remove that asterisk and bring it forward to you at the next meeting.
Okay, and then, in terms of the reports that we've had this evening, we need a motion to accept the reports as a report of progress. Sorry, that would be 8.5, 8.6, and 8.8. Motion by Mr. Dakota, seconded by Mr. Hoey. All those in favor? Motion passes. Under new business, we have a salary adjustment for non-affiliated staff. Can I have a motion to approve that? By Mr. Nutter, seconded by Mr. Hoey. Roll call.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Nutter?
Yes.
Mayor Samaras?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Hoey?
Yes.
Six sheaves, one absent, approved.
We need a motion to approve a budget transfer. Are there any questions or comments about this, or can we get a motion to approve? Mr. Nutter, seconded by Mr. Dakota. Roll call.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Nutter?
Yes.
Mayor Samaras?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Hoey?
Yes.
Six sheaves, one absent, approved.
We have the Hackinger Research Proposal. We're looking for a motion to approve this educational research request. Motion to approve, Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Hoey. Roll call.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Nutter?
Yes.
Mayor Samaras?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Hoey?
Yes.
Six sheaves, one absent, approved.
We have a number of convention conference requests. Motion to take them all together, by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Lay. Roll call.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Nutter?
Yes.
Mayor Samaras?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Hoey?
Yes.
Six sheaves, one absent, approved.
We have a UTL wants to donate sick days. The members of the United Teachers of Lowell hereby donate 21 sick days to Lynn Lavassier, a Lincoln School teacher. Motion to accept. Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Nutter. Roll call.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Nutter?
Yes.
Mayor Samaras?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Hoey?
Yes.
Six sheaves, one absent, approved.
Ms. Martin?
If I could, Madam Chairwoman, make a request for a suspension of the rules for the purposes of doing a brief report on Monday evening's school building subcommittee?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Martin to suspend the rules to provide a report, seconded by Mr. Hoey. All in favor, say aye. Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much. I will be very brief, because I would prefer to be able to provide my colleagues and everyone else with the report and writing, and I haven't been able to get my hands on it yet. But I will just say, you know, the meeting did take place on Monday evening. I think some of the key decisions that were made were to try and really accelerate this process so that we can be to the Mass School Building Authority in time for their June meeting. I think that will be, that's going to be a dramatic challenge, but certainly everyone on the committee and the consultants that we're working with all seem committed to moving that forward as quickly as we can. Other decisions that were made were the submission of three final plans to move forward with MSBA, all of which now do not include any pool facility, recognizing that, I will speak just for myself, recognizing that there is still, I think, a strong desire to have a pool available to our students, but it will not be part of this building renovation. It would need to be a separate, a separate capital investment. But overall, certainly, there are some phone calls, I know, a number of follow-up questions that the administration is going to be asking of MSBA moving forward. You know, there is still a number of questions around, you know, literally square footage of athletic space, square footage of administration space, so those are all things that will need to get determined in the next few weeks. We will have our next school building subcommittee coming up the first week in March, and what I would like to recommend, and I'd make it in the form of a motion, is that, a motion that this committee be provided with the written minutes from the current meeting, so that will be provided to you in time for the next packet, so everyone can have a copy of those, and as a second part of that motion, to request that immediately following the next school building subcommittee, an item be added to the agenda for a report similar to what I'm giving right now that would, at that time, have the written minutes accompanying from the March meeting. I'm happy to try and answer any questions. I don't know if I can, but I'll try.
Second.
Hoey? All those in favor? Aye. Mr. Hoey?
Yes, I'd also like to make a motion that I gave Ms. Sheen, if you don't mind. Would you read that for us, please?
A motion to have a letter of support sent to the MSBA from area superintendents to address how nice having a new fieldhouse for the greater Lowell area would be.
So, a motion by Mr. Hoey, is there a second on that? Mr. Lay? So, basically, it's directing the superintendent?
Yes.
To ask area superintendents to send a letter of support. The fieldhouse is a community resource.
Yeah.
And just a letter of support.
And the reason why I think this motion is good is because a fieldhouse in Lowell is important, and a lot of times, we have it for like 24 different schools will come in with cheerleading things, or big wrestling tournaments, even though we use songists, but I think we're charged for a lot of money to be over at songists, but a fieldhouse in Lowell is, to me, is the real key. It's not all about a pool to me. That fieldhouse is huge, and I think it's just real simple, have the superintendent go out and see if we can get the surrounding towns to send some support. That's all. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye, motion passes. I'm looking for a motion to adjourn, by Mr. Hoey, seconded by Ms. Martin. Oh, I'm sorry, was there something else?
Also like to, we can, see if we can, next week is a vacation week, so.
I'd like to make a motion that we cancel the next meeting.
Okay, so, the motion is from Mr. Hoey to cancel the next meeting because it is February Vacation Week, seconded by Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much. Not to bum anyone out, but we do have a number of time-sensitive things that were postponed from this evening. This is, that would now put us four weeks away from when these items were meant to be discussed, because our meeting tonight is from the postponement last week. If we don't meet next week, then we're not going to meet again for another two weeks. So, I'm.
And I think we had a motion earlier tonight about a finance subcommittee meeting next Wednesday.
Which everyone seems to going to be here for anyway.
Right.
Okay, then.
So, do you want to take a roll call on that?
I have no problem to pull the motion back. That's okay. I can wait another week to go on vacation. I just, what I was worried.
He was supposed to go this week.
But what I was worried about, I was going on vacation tonight, and it didn't happen, but that's okay, too. What I'm really concerned about is, it's people, like, when they're on school vacation, they can't be here for any of their input, that's all. And that's why I thought we should maybe cancel, but I can see what Ms. Martin just said, and that's fine with me, too. So, I'd like to just pull the motion back, that's all. And I just, if you don't mind, I have one more thing I'd like to say.
No problem, and we're going to withdraw that motion and point a personal motion to Mr. Hoey.
Through you, Madam Chair, to the acting superintendent, if you could do me a favor. March 23rd is, they're going to have Greek Independence Day, and over at the Greek Church here at 9:30 is the Mass, and they're just, and I know they probably have a way of doing this, but I just felt I could bring it up. At 10 o'clock, they want to march to the City Hall, and they're looking for the band, the Lowell High Band again, so I don't know if you guys can look into that for me.
We can, we can look into that.
Thank you very much.
Do you give me the information?
I'm all set.
And Mr. Dakota?
I'd just like to point out that the Lowell High School Band is the only band in the entire state of Massachusetts that actually knows the Greek National Anthem, which is why they get called to all the time.
If I could, I would just like to add that for administration, particularly Deputy Durkin and myself, based on our office location, we get first crack at the band as they come marching down Kirk Street on their way to City Hall, so I support this motion wholeheartedly because I love the concert that walks by my office window.
Okay.
Any other comments or, okay, motion to adjourn by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Dakota. Thank you all very much.
Nice job.